I'd like to call to order the Select Board meeting of Monday, September 19. And according to Mass. General law, Chapter 30a, Section 21, we need to go into executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie? Not present this moment. Okay, so in the chair votes, yes. Four to zero, we will go into executive session and we'll return at 6:30.
I'd like to call to the September 19th meeting of, is this the 19th? Yes, it is. 19th Select Board, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the people of our land, which stands one nation, founded on the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we honor our veterans, both past and present, along with our health workers. Thanks very much. Please be seated. Okay, 6:37, not bad. Thank you for waiting for us. Our first order of business is with the EverSource Vegetation Management Plan. Anthony, are you here?
Anthony Vellou.
Please step forward.
Yes, by way of background, the Select Board had asked at a previous meeting of, I think, a few months ago, about EverSource's vegetation management plan, how they decide which trees to prune and how to do that. And you asked if a member of EverSource would come here and present that vegetation plan to the board to give it more clarity. So Anthony Vellou is our EverSource representative, and he's brought some of his associates here to update the board.
Is it more than justice? We have the tree people with us.
I thought they looked like tree guys.
Yes, I thought it was.
I like to say we planned it that way, but we didn't. Okay, could you introduce yourself and give us some background?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for inviting, and Councilors, for inviting us to this meeting to discuss vegetation management on Dartmouth Street and Tucker Road. Happy to try and troubleshoot some of those issues with me.
Speak a little more into the microphone.
Sorry.
You can pull it down.
Yeah, gotcha.
I'll pull it up.
With me, I brought Paul Sellers, manager of vegetation management for Massachusetts, and Kyle Barry, the arborist for Greer in New Bedford. And I'll kick it back to you guys to open up discussions.
Oh, so, well, one of the questions the Select Board had asked is, you know, what is the, I think there were a few roads in town. One was Dartmouth Street, and there was another road, and they just want to know how does EverSource decide what trees to trim and how to leave them after the fact, you know, what considerations are made in deciding what to trim, and then how to leave them after they've been trimmed.
Sure.
I guess that's a good way to start.
I'll hand it off to Paul.
Sure. He's into it. He's been here before.
Well, good evening, and thanks for having us. So our vegetation management program, the pruning aspect of it, which we're on a cyclical basis, basically every four to five years, we go through specific circuit areas or geographical areas that are broken down by the electric circuits that feed Dartmouth. And we go through that every four to five years. We prune around the primary wires at the top of the pole, the highest voltage lines, and we're trying to achieve a clearance distance of 10 feet to the side of those lines, 10 feet below, and 15 feet above. In some cases, we may come back to the town's tree warden and ask for some exaggerated clearances because of the tree species, or the conditions, or reliability issues that we may be facing in certain areas of town. But those areas that we do prune on the cyclical basis, we send out a notification prior to starting that work, to the residents within those circuit areas, so everyone should be receiving a letter saying that we're coming within a certain timeframe, outlines what the contractor's name is that we use, and just some of the basic generic background of what we're trying to achieve. When we come into town, town like Dartmouth or any town, we strive to submit to you a yearly operational plan, a YOP on an annual basis, which is outlined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 87, Section 14, the utility portion of the tree laws for the Commonwealth. And we submit those yearly operational plans to the tree warden. They look at those, they approve them. Dartmouth has an additional criteria because they have a number of scenic roads, so we actually go before the Town Planning Board as well and submit essentially that same yearly operational plan to them. So that's the pruning aspect of what takes place. Within that YOP, and Kyle can probably speak more to the specifics of this year's YOP, it again outlines a very circuit numbers, the areas, the maps, what we provide you with a pretty detailed package of information of where we plan on working throughout the year. So that's pruning. Tree removals, wholly different aspect, and we treat that very much independently from the pruning process. A tree removal effort takes a tremendous amount of work. We actually dispatch arborists into certain areas where we feel we need to address hazard declining, decaying trees, or trees that are impacting, again, reliability as a result of storms or just over mature growth. So that's where we have an arborist go out into the field, and he'll literally walk the backbone, that three-phase area where we're seeing the most impact to our customers, and they'll try and identify individual trees that we feel we need to petition for removal. So that petition for removal, that starts off with the individual property owners first. We usually flag those trees with a blue tape. You may have seen it in the past. And then we start to make a communication with the property owner through a door hanger, but most of the time it's through a letter that we'll send to the property owner asking for permission or consent. So we say permission or consent because if the tree is within the town's road layout, we're simply asking the property owner for their consent that they agree the tree should be removed before we bring it forward to the town's tree warden, or again, if it's with an scenic road, town tree warden and your planning board for a final approval through a permitting process, or approval of a hazard tree mitigation plan, again, as outlined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 87, Section 14. So that's kind of the nutshell of what the program entails, and we've been performing that for a number of years now here in Dartmouth, and had a, I think, a very good relationship with the town's tree warden and the planning board in those cases, so. But we're happy to answer any questions if you have specific concerns.
Mr. McDonald?
Well, I'll, no, go ahead.
Age before beauty.
Who's older?
You know, we, it's got me beat by 50 years.
That's all well and good. We've heard this before. You've been before us before.
Uh huh.
That's not my issue. The issue at hand is, the pruning seems to have, there's no rhyme, no reason. And I get this answer from numerous, from numerous residents in town, mainly my dear cousin, Mrs., I can't mention her. But some of the trees, when they're done, looks worse than they started. You've got limbs that are growing outside, across the road, and you don't do anything about that. I mean, you've had, you have older trees that are on Tucker Road, let's say, that, at any point, some of these trees could collapse and fall in someone's car. I know this happened to some friend of mine that drove for a limousine service, and he perished one day on, in New York, in the wrong place at the wrong time, however. But I don't see that happening at all. I don't see any rhyme or reason. It just looks like you cut it just to make, it's not close to your lines, and God bless you. I don't want to lose power, but it doesn't seem to be, you don't seem to have a plan. So I'm thinking, when do you look at these trees? Do you look at them, I would do it, and again, I know you're busy, you do it all over the, all over the state, but you need to look at it when we have no leaves, and you need to look at it when we do have leaves. And that, that's not happening. And again, and I don't want to be repetitious. This seems to be, and I mean this sincerely, and not trying to, not trying to insult you, but seems to have, there's no plan at all. Just cut, relieve the area where the lines are, and we're done. And one other, one last thing. I'd like to see a report from your office, how many times you've left letters to homeowners to have their trees removed. If you could get me that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Well, to answer, I guess, there's two questions here that you're kind of proposing to me, that we don't have a plan. We do have a plan, very robust plan, but our plan is, again, specific to the distribution lines. So you are going to see other parts of the canopy of the tree that we don't touch, that we'll never touch. And Tucker Road is actually a great example. Tucker Road is a time bomb at this point. You're inundated with numerous ash trees that are dead, in decline, or going to become a significant issue.
Very true.
And they do need to be addressed because of Emerald Ash Bore that's just decimating that portion of the town. So our pruning would never ever imaginable, we would never address those failures of those trees when we're doing a pruning program. They're the type of thing that we would address and work with the town on a removal effort. But again, Tucker Road is one of the classic scenic roads in town.
Could you just clarify that for me? I think what you're saying is that when you prune, all it does is relieve the wire, and it's not your responsibility, if it looks like it's going to fall or it's graping, that's not your, it'll never be the responsibility of EverSource. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Unless it's threatening, aware there specifically for the maintenance and the, and the well-being of the distribution of electricity, that's what we're pruning for.
So what you're saying is it's a town issue, the ones that are hanging over, look like they're going to fall.
Oh, correct, 100%. We don't own a single tree in the town of Dartmouth. We're just asking your permission to prune that electrical distribution system, the trees around that. That being said, that's why we try and have a relationship with the tree warden, so we can address some of those issues that might be a concern beyond that. Because you should be, and that's the basis of having a yearly operational plan, is that you know where we're working, you know where to integrate your plan with our plan, so there should be some benefit to having us work with you in the future.
Okay.
And then you asked me for the detail of where we have left letters for homeowners for removal. We don't, we don't track that long term. We're looking at, we'll remove over 30,000 trees this year in the Massachusetts system, so we just don't keep those types, that detailed, finite record. If we don't have a response from a property owner for a tree removal, we're moving on because we just have to keep rolling. So we don't keep that, the denials on record.
Mr. Brooks?
I have a follow-up to that question, that statement, which is if you don't, you move on if it's been denied. What happens if then that tree causes a power outage?
We restore the power.
And cut down the tree, or remove the.
We may not, the tree would actually fall. It would be the responsibility, unfortunately, the town may get involved at that point. Tucker Road's a great example. You know, if we drove down there tonight, we could point out several trees that have failed that have probably been the burden of the town to address after a outage took place.
Okay, so that seems to me why Mr. Mickelson would want the list, so we can work with those homeowners. But that's a separate issue. I wanted to commend you on the vegetation management website link that was given to us. It was a rabbit hole of information, and I found it very interesting, in addition to the vegetation, but also pest management and the other things that you did. So I thought it was very comprehensive, but I really was thinking that what it was looking at were those big tracks of electricity, and.
The power lines.
The power lines.
The transmission right-of-ways?
Yes, and not so much the.
Distribution lines.
Distribution lines.
Sure.
So in looking for, when are you due to come into Dartmouth?
Yeah, so we're in Dartmouth right now, and maybe Kyle, you can point, just share with us the circuits that we are addressing this year.
Kyle Barry, EverSource arborist, and we've got some work going on right now, quite a bit in South Dartmouth.
Move up to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Quite a bit of work going on right now in South Dartmouth, using Barnes Tree, one of our contractors. You've probably seen them around Bakerville Road area, Gulf Road area, Smithneck, Rocker Dundee, most recently. Earlier in the year, we were up on the far northeast corner around Flag Swamp Road, and in the near future, we'll be moving along Fisher Road area as well. So kind of focused around South Dartmouth at the moment.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah. I don't want to say I'm an old hat at this, but geez, I'm an old hat at this. No matter what is done, you're going to get vilified. If you don't do it, something happens, you're going to get vilified. If you do do it, you're going to get vilified. I think part of the problem is this, it's sometimes the shape. As you said, you have to go X number of feet this way, X number of feet this way, X number of feet this way. And I think what sometimes the average person sees when they're driving down the road is a donut-shaped tree, and I think that kind of gets everybody, like, why do they do that? Why is it just one branch sticking out that maybe if they just cut it off, it would look a lot better than just a donut shape? So, I mean, you guys have the expertise, but there's probably somewhere in the vicinity of 25,000 supervisors as to, you know, the situation. Everybody has an opinion on it, and, but I think those opinions go out the window when trees start to fall during the wintertime. It doesn't make a difference what you do, how you do it, it all depends upon the severity of the storm. And Tucker Road is habitual power loss. Everything would be fine if everything was underground, but, you know, that's just not going to happen. We know that. Maybe the newer places, any new places being developed can go underground, that's fine for them. But you still have to get the power to them by what's already there above ground. So I, I think, I think part of the, part of the issue is, is the conditions of what, of how it's left. You know, I think the most complaints that I get most of the time is the donut shape, you know, and just, or there's one just giant limb out there. I think people would be more apt to say, okay, then just remove the limb. You know, just remove the limb and let the tree go where it needs to go. We're not, I know we'll be, we'll be dealing with another issue and, you know, of somebody clear-cutting, but, you know, this is something entirely different. It may be kind of on the same breath, clear-cutting and pruning, but it's really not. So I've seen, I've seen instances where you're, where the work you guys perform does eliminate some power outages, but then again, I've seen some times when the work you've done has just absolutely riled the neighborhood. And I think many, I think about at least five, six years ago, maybe, somewhere down that line on Horse Neck Road, there was a big brouhaha about the way the trees were trimmed on Horse Neck Road. And that's, I think, the last time when you guys were in here was because of that. So, I mean, I don't envy your position, I don't envy, envy your job, but I think understanding that, you know, it's all about presentation, you know, it's the way things are left, and I think that's the biggest, that's the biggest thing. And maybe, maybe your corporate officers need to be a little bit more diligent in. And maybe, maybe your corporate officers need to be a little bit more diligent in getting the word out, and educating the public more on what you need to do and how you need to do it, than just providing, coming here and listening to us, and then just say, okay, here's a link. I think, I think the corporate people need to be a little bit more active on consumer education, especially on something like this. Because this is New England, this ain't Kansas. There's no wheat fields here. This is all trees.
Yeah, but, hang on a second, we'll be right with you. I have a, we'll definitely give you an opportunity. I have a couple of questions. Is there any way to ask me an unfair question, maybe or maybe not? How many, the trees that have to go down, how many are recommended by the homeowner versus your, your contract workers? Is it more or less either way, significant?
Trees to be removed, we would target a particular area, we would target...
No, how many are suggested by the homeowner versus by your staff going into, onto the streets? Is the homeowner amount significant, they reported?
If I can, I guess if I can understand your question.
Yeah.
So are you asking, are we constantly being asked by property owners for tree removals?
Of all trees that go down, that are in the homeowner's yard, how many, what's the, are those mostly reported by the homeowner, or your experts see it and they say, we've got to take it down?
I would say it's more us being out there looking for these trees.
Okay, so the homeowner is less active in saying, I want that tree down?
Oh yeah, 100%, yeah, that, yeah.
Okay, good.
It's, we have to have a very proactive approach at tree, mitigating the tree removals.
Okay, that, good point. That's what I figured. My, my question is, and maybe it sounds like I'm letting you guys off the hook, but it sounds to me, based on what you say in looking at your website, is that you go in there to save trees from power lines. And whatever you interpret as to how that should be done, that's what you do. The other trees and limbs that are left are the responsibility of the town. Is that a fair statement?
I would say that's a fair statement, but again, I'm going to point out, the yearly operational plan is the critical link for every community. That was set up in 2011, and it was a collaborative effort between the Massachusetts Tree Wardens Association and the state legislature to come up with change to mass general law to develop that relationship with the tree warden. So when we send you a yearly operational plan, it's really to your advantage to look at it and come up with what you want to see as an outcome from it. So if, to Mr. McDonald's point, if you're concerned about the, what the, may look after we've done our pruning, there's nothing stopping a tree warden from saying, I would like to go around and do an audit of the work with you and find some of those things that you might be concerned about, which is what we had done in the past with Mr. Hickox.
I maybe stepped out of line here, but I'm going to say it anyway, because it's sound, when I heard the, I didn't know this, that the director of the DPW is the tree warden, it seems like, seems like a tough job for the DPW, he's kind of worried about water and sewer and all those kind of things. And it, maybe it's divine right here that we have people interested in trees, very interested, that maybe as a town, we can do, make a better effort to coordinate through the tree warden and the DPW and EverSource, we can do a better job as a town to address these trees and cut them down, because the visual means nothing. There are trees on Dartmouth Street that look like they're going to go down, and I could hear from an arborist say, those trees are fine, and I don't know what I'm talking about. But those are the things that I think we're concerned, and there's certainly trees, streets that we can target. And number one on the list without question is Tucker Road. And we, as a town, can do a better job monitoring it and decide who's responsible, whether it be EverSource or our town, to make a decision on making a plan on a priority basis, just the way they do roads in town. They prioritize the roads that have to be done first versus others that can wait down the road. And I'd be anxious to see what our tree experts and enthusiasts have to say in that regard, and if, maybe it's fitting that you're here tonight, and we'll, we'll take advantage of it either way. Want to make comment now? Step up and introduce yourself, please.
Boy, this is wonderful to have this conversation, because, is Tim here? Tim Barber?
No.
Vacation.
Oh, okay.
Well, we called him in twice last month on his vacation, we weren't going to do it again.
So I'm Ann Parsons, Chair of the Dartmouth Tree Committee, and I'll get into the charge I gave you, but one thing where, Tim had told me that he's working with EverSource to plant smaller trees under the wires in the future. And you see a lot of that driving around town. It's really positive to see that happening. So what we're talking about tonight are the older trees, the Norway maples that should have been, should not have been planted to begin with, those older water hogs, they're called. And those older trees are the ones that are giving way. You take some of those branches off, and they do die, they rot it out, they're rotting out. There's one at the end of my street that's rotten because of the carving that's happening. But that is the past, and it'd be cool to get your reaction about the future of planting smaller trees.
Sure. So fortunately, we have been the future here in Dartmouth in planting trees, and we have for several years, when I think we have a pretty good history of working with the DPW, again, doing plantings throughout Dartmouth. So we're always eager to look at those opportunities. We, Kyle is a heavy advocate for replanting, so that's one thing we would love to embrace with the tree committee, is, is doing more plantings, so.
What size tree?
Well, we generally like to go with something more in a two, two-and-a-half-inch caliper size tree. Those seem to be, have the best survivability. Anything much smaller, it just gets decimated by the lawn, lawn mowers and things like that. Anything much bigger, it's just harder to maintain as far as water. So, and that was some of the issues we had, not just in Dartmouth, but planting in general. We start getting over that two-and-a-half-inch caliper size beyond something you can use a gator bag on, a watering bag to, for watering, and...
Is that the mature diameter of the tree?
No, no, that's just the installation size.
Right, and what's...
It depends upon the species, you know, we're very species-specific. I mean, we have a great poster, which you may have seen on the website when you're looking around, 30 trees under 30 feet. And so we have a great poster for that. We worked with Michael Durr, you might know Mr. Durr, eminent plant person here in the United States, and so we've really tried to emphasize the right tree in the right place for utility plantings. So we would be happy to discuss or further look at opportunities for plantings.
Mr. Mickelson? So do you have a number of trees that you've planted, say, in the last three years?
I'd have to, we'd have to dig up the number.
Can we get that information?
Sure, yeah.
And one last thing, and I'm not going to beat on it, on the, drive down Dartmouth Street, right near my dear friend's store, on the east side of Dartmouth Street, there is a tree that is dead, and it's been dead for 10, dead for 10 years. So you've been driving up and down Dartmouth Street, pruning trees, and there's a dead tree for 10 years. There's not a leaf, there's nothing...
How can a tree be dead for 10 years?
It's just there, it's dead.
Yeah. No, I wouldn't, I, it wouldn't surprise me if there was a dead tree that the utility did not own, that is probably standing there.
Right.
Correct.
Are you saying that that should be the responsibility of the EverSource to take it down?
You mentioned that your company replaces trees, dead trees, you obviously take them out and you replace them.
But that tree is no risk Hawaii right now.
No, it doesn't have...
So what he's saying is that's not our responsibility, unless I'm reading this incorrectly?
Correct.
Okay.
But again, we are more than willing to work with the town, collaborate...
What native effort would be, okay.
I'd like to see that number anyway.
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else, any comments?
There are some trees on Bakerville Road, which you said you're, you're there now, that have either blue, or red, or both, spray paint on them. So I'm assuming they're coming down.
They are, they're diseased.
By EverSource, or by the town?
By the town.
So I will say that if it's blue, that's our color that we use to distinguish utility trees that we would be removing. If you see a blue dot or a blue X, that's generally an EverSource. If it's red, I think the town usually marks theirs with a, with a red color, so.
Well, this one, everyone's fighting over, I guess.
Maybe it was for Halloween.
Well, it must be red.
Well, I for one, you know, I think it's, it's kind of exciting to see the tree, the tree people here today, and I would like to think that after you make your presentation, that maybe as a town, in coordinating with the tree warden, we can do a better job as a town to coordinate our efforts with you and decide on a street-by-street basis, especially the worst ones, that we can do a better job of, if it's our responsibility, fine, if you can help us, that's fine, and if it's yours, that's even better.
Yeah.
Is that what we're talking about here?
No, agreed. And again, Tucker Road, we've been agonizing over that for a couple of decades, and I've been with the company for nearly 25 years, and Tucker Road is always the road. And unfortunately now, as I mentioned, Emerald Ash Bore is just devastating that whole road. So that would be a great location for us to collaborate on, in a bigger way, so.
That would number one, right?
Let's, you know, jump right in, so.
Anybody have any other comments?
Not for EverSource.
Thanks very much for responding to come in for us, and we're going to get back to you. Yes, sir.
Paul's been here for 25 years, I've been here for two months with EverSource, so, but as community relations, I'm more than happy to facilitate any future meetings, and in the places that we are doing work, if people haven't responded to our notification, I'll check in with Kyle and see if maybe we can reach out again, or let you guys know to make another effort in case we do need to remove a tree and people just aren't responding.
We want to support you.
Great, well, we'll hear from us for sure. Thanks so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Great. Nice going. Okay.
Great segue.
What's that?
Great segue.
Yeah, great segue. This is like too good to be true.
Segue.
We have with us the Dartmouth Tree Committee request. Could you please step forward and just reintroduce yourself, if you wouldn't mind?
So I'm Ann Parsons, Chair of DTC, we call it Dartmouth Tree Committee, and a couple of us are here. And thank you so much for seeing us, putting us on the agenda. I'm getting a little nervous, so forgive me.
You're doing great.
You guys look pretty friendly.
You're doing great.
So...
Amy's struggling over here, but you're doing fine.
I'm okay with you, I'm not so, I'm not that, I don't feel that strongly about EverSource. I've gone through this for 12 years.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't know if you read the charge that we sent, did you read it?
We all had it, yes.
I'm just going to go over a couple of the points.
Go right ahead, take all the time you want.
So, let's see, we have a broad mission of, to promote the protection, planting, and care of trees and forests, as well as to raise awareness of the many benefits that trees have for our town of Dartmouth. We started about 15 months ago, largely out of concern for the town's trees, which are under tremendous pressure these days, all human-made pressure, certainly from global warming to development. And we really want to work with the town warden, Tim, and the town and other administration, administrators, to disseminate important tree regulations and other information with residents and businesses, to encourage them to protect and plant trees, and basically improve Dartmouth's tree canopy. So in order to be effective with our outreach, we are requesting that Dartmouth Tree Committee be adopted, or really appointed, I guess, as a town committee, and might be given a page on the town website, so that we can post information that guides residents to best practices, and familiarizes them more with tree-related policies. This is really important, the Chapter 87 fiasco that happened down, perhaps you know, the 12 public way trees that were taken down, Gould and, what street?
Elm, off of Elm.
Wilson.
Yes. You know, there are a lot of people who really don't know what Chapter 87 is all about. And last week, when I spoke with the DPW in their 15th Wednesday meeting, Tim agreed to try and send out more publications to the developers and the contractors, reminding them that this is a crime, and that they can't get away with it. So anyways, we want to help the town with communication most of all. And as a group, we want to proceed slowly, in an organized fashion, with a few goals each year, that we think are worthwhile. What, for instance, one is to get the town to adopt, create an adopt a tree program, which New Bedford has this very wonderful program, I don't know if you know about it. It pays for itself, and it gets residents involved with planting their own trees on either public way and sometimes even private. It also might be worthwhile launching a multi-year, town-wide tree planting campaign, and that's happening in many other towns. Also, as many other towns are doing, we would like to help the town craft a tree ordinance that could strengthen regulations on both public and private property, for the sake of protecting trees. And in short, Dartmouth trees have always been one of the most outstanding natural treasures, so it's important at this point to really concentrate on them more. I wanted to mention that we hope to raise funds for new trees, and that's happening, for instance, in Marion, they raise a lot of money for all their new trees, in small town, but every corner on Marion has new trees that are being watched over very carefully. So we're hoping that we, we would like to request a fund for receipt of such contributions. It would be a town fund. Also, we recommend that the town create a line item in its budget for tree work. Currently, I believe, the tree expenses and snow removal are lumped together. There's no telling at this point how much the town is spending on trees. Now, all in all, we can save you money, I'd like to think, because you won't have all these trees suddenly falling down, you have new trees that are growing up, we'll, we'll get money to help plant new trees. So it's a win-win, we think. So that's about it. Questions?
I first want to say that your enthusiasm for the, for the program comes through loud and clear, you did a nice presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have a comment here? Mr. McDonald?
Just like the globe, everything comes in a complete circle. This comes back to, back to 1980, when I was first elected on the PAC board. PAC board had a tree planning program, and they had it for several years, where residents could request a tree on their property. If you had a corner lot, you could get three trees. If you had a large enough lot, you could get two trees, smaller lots cost one tree. We used to get the trees from, thank you, name just came in, Vanderpoel Nursery's out of the Haven. They were in, they gave the town a tremendous break on the trees, and people used to write in, and the PAC board employees would actually plant the trees. I went one year with the superintendent, Rosario Supranat, at that year, we planted approximately 25 trees during the course of the town. Some of them are still there. I was also involved in a tree program in North Kingston, Rhode Island, where a gentleman, I believe his name is Chris Carter, started a program about getting quiet-on cherry trees. For $25, you got a tree. And our company planted approximately 50 trees on our property, and paid for approximately 50 for throughout the town of North Kingston. A lot of those trees are still there. So this is something that I think we can do, finding the money for, having a finance committee member on the committee also kind of helps.
He's not taking eye contact.
But I think what also, and it's starting to, we're starting to see it, where we have the DPW director is also as the tree warden, but we also have a couple of tree guys in the DPW that regularly go out and take care of it, and I think that's something we as a board and we as a town also need to provide the support for the DPW, so that they can do a lot of this stuff, and a lot of, a lot of this work. But I think this is something that would be welcome. I don't have a problem in, in looking at it, the only thing I don't want to, I don't want it perceived that the town become... The only thing I don't want to, I don't want it perceived that the town become onerous in telling you what trees or how you should be planting trees on your own property. In my neighborhood alone, I had two neighbors basically clear-cut their lots and it changed the entire dynamic of the neighborhood, but particularly also my house, because I don't get as many leaves as I used to. But I do get a complete change of the way the wind is, the wind shifted and how things are. It's not like it was several years ago. It's completely changed, so.
Can I talk about that a little? We started this because there were a couple of lots around us. I live on High Street, that were clear-cut. And we lost a lot of the habitat for any wild animal. I haven't seen, this first year, I haven't seen fox in 20 years. Used to see all different critters. The clear-cut of these lots, there are ways of controlling it. And yes, that's private property. But I'll just tell you, this, you know, Newton just came up with, will possibly pretty soon pass a moratorium on taking down trees on public property of a certain type of tree, older trees, bigger trees, because there's a real concern about losing all this vegetation with no, no talk about planting smaller trees. There's other towns that the ordinance is, every time a tree is cut down, another tree needs to be planted in town. Now, this is what you can do with a really good bylaw here in Dartmouth to control some of what you're talking about.
Part of, part of the two is that the town has to be in tune with this. And when I say in tune, several departments need to be cognizant of what they need to, what they're doing. Because way, many years ago, and probably still to this day, the planning board always wanted you to plant trees. They wanted, in some subdivisions, you'll see trees. Lot of those subdivisions, though, are now having problems with the sidewalks. And where the roots of these trees are actually lifting up the sidewalks and the sidewalks are just basically, they're just no good to walk in anymore because it's like you're going off-roading as you're walking. And they're trip hazards. So it's, clearly, it's the type of tree that you need to plant. I mean.
That's poor planting.
Norway maple is not a tree you plant near the road or a sidewalk. Forget it.
Well, it's banned.
Any kind of maple tree, to be honest with you.
Norway maples are banned at this point in most states.
And, and which also I don't quite understand because red maples are also called an invasive species in this state and it's hard to get a red maple. But my house, I've got six of them. I love them. So, and they're way off the road. But still, I mean, and that's the thing that's, that's the thing that's very, has to be, the DPW has to work with us and the planning board has to work with the developers. And they also have, but it's also going to be the right trees. I mean, you know, Donald Perry was, you know, basically, he was, he was the tree guy, you know, and everything that went through the planning board, you know, you can almost willing to bet there was going to be at least 20 to 25 trees planted, no matter where it goes.
That's one thing. We've created a list of the trees to plant in this neighborhood. And that's one thing that we would put on the website and would publicize. And where to, where to plant them is very important.
Mr. Mickelson?
That's the information we need. And it's wonderful to hear this small group that's really going to help the town out in a big way. But what Sean had to mention about, about these developments and, and what these, so 25, 30 years ago, they built these developments, they planted maple trees, and they now have no sidewalks because they're torn up. They have to walk on their streets. A dear friend of mine sends me a picture every other day. I can't walk on my sidewalk. And he's a wonderful individual. Now, moving forward that idea, I believe when Dave Hickox was here, not that long ago, we had talked about a solution for all these areas that have basically lost their sidewalks. And so there were two decisions you had to make. Do we take the trees down? Or do we replace, and take the trees down and replace the sidewalks? And the expense for the town to do that was exorbitant. The other alternative was to take the sidewalks out and plant grass, but no sidewalks. So there's, at that point, because of the, the wrong decision about the wrong tree to plant 30 years ago, these developments will end up, by all means, with no sidewalk at all. So they'll still end up walking in the street, unfortunately.
Yeah. Mrs. Brooks?
First, I want to applaud you for coming together and creating this group. This is a time where we're so concerned about our environmental impact. This is something that has a positive environmental impact. And I love the idea. Earlier today, I did click on your Facebook, and so I'm hoping you'll allow me to join. But I just thought even the Facebook page would be a great resource of information. But I certainly do see that we could certainly support the organization of your committee. And, I mean, you have exactly what we're asking for for a formal committee appointment. You have goals and objectives. You have a mission statement. And I think it would be a great resource to just have you for these other departments, say, you know, where could we look at planting? Where are we having erosion issues? What should we be doing? And I'll be honest, I think the Gould-Wilson Street was an aha moment. I drive down Bush Street and the first thing I thought of is, wow, I can see the water. And then I realized, I shouldn't be able to see the water. And so that was, you know, kind of how I discovered that those trees had been taken down. But we don't want that to happen again. And I have driven by it again to see what will it look like erosion-wise once the other greens are taken away and what's going to happen to that neighborhood. But I think we need to be in advance of these issues.
I would say that taking the tragedy of losing those 12 trees and you all being here with the EverSource meeting the same day, I think the message is pretty clear. And I think I refer to Mr. McGinnis. I think he has an idea in regard to how we form the committee, what we do.
Oh, yeah. So what I would recommend is what we usually do. Nope, not at all. The group has created a committee charge, which is great. We have a formal committee charge template that we put together. So there's some information that's, that's missing that we would include. So if the board is favorable to forming the committee in the future, we would come to a future meeting and would draft a formal committee charge that would identify, you know, who's on the committee, what their task is, what their goals are and things like that. So a meeting in maybe October, early October, or the next meeting after that. So October 3rd is the next meeting. I don't know if we'd have it for that, but if not, the following meeting and then the board can formalize it and appoint it. We'll give them some space on the town's website and help them to promote it.
And all the other issues about, you know, finances and providing. That'll come along as a meeting. And they come to us for these, that would have to probably be approved by us as well. But I think you're going to get an enormous amount of support. And I think that the other thing I will mention is that the DPW is going through a metamorphosis right now. And Tim is the new man on the block and he's got 25 years of town history. And we're supporting him with, with a lot of new things now because the department needs it. And I think he'd be a great guy to work with because his knowledge of the town, but he doesn't have that much time for it. So he'll be a perfect combination of helping him out and do his job. And we're going to work with you to make sure because our, we're doing a lot of work with DPW to help him out. It's a giant department and it needs, it needs direction. And, and they're doing a great job with a lot of new people. So the timing's good.
Tim has been so positive.
Fabulous, yep.
He's Greek, I.
I'd like to see something that possibly we could work on to go out in tax bills. You know, now we have a donation.
Yep.
Adopt a tree.
And adopting a tree right in the tax bill. And if we could get to, you know, once we have this going, I think, a nice interview on DCTV.
Yep.
So that people know you exist and how to contact you if they have questions for planting trees on their yard.
Taking the visibility of those lost trees and taking into something positive is a great thing. Yes?
Communication is so, communication is so important for us because. I'm a journalist, to be honest, science journalist. And so the message is really important and there are good ways to get it out there. Question to you is our email. I've been holding back on creating an email for us because I thought if we get on the town website, do we get an email attached to that?
Yeah, we can.
We can talk about that. We don't do that for all committees, but we can certainly, if you think that would be beneficial to your message.
I don't know. So I've been holding back on Gmail, for instance, thinking maybe you could do that for us? So is that an option, maybe?
I think so. I'll check with our IT staff to make, to confirm. But I don't want to speak for them just yet.
Okay.
Whatever.
Who could come under the contact information?
I have just one last thing. I'm going to leave you. We've got a tree walk happening on Sunday and it's called Dartmouth Tree Walk. So we are not an events-giving organization much, but we're going to give two events a year. And this is our fall event. And it's, we've got a whole pamphlet about it, but it leaves from the Congregational Church on Middle Street. And it's December, I mean, it's December, I'm sorry, September 25th, 2 to 5. So you're all welcome to come. And I'm just going to leave you with.
Awesome.
Great.
This is pre-official committee work already. Okay, wonderful. Well, we're going to support you everywhere we can.
Great, thank you very much.
Get great support from here. Thanks for the work you're doing for us.
Thank you.
Okay. Next. We're all set here, moving on. We have the youth advocate update.
Yes, so Dolores Joseph, our youth advocate, has been working very hard on a number of programs and initiatives that are beneficial to the public. So I wanted to have her before the board to kind of talk about those things and publicize them so we can get as much participation as possible.
Thank you. Am I loud enough? Am I close enough?
Usually you don't even need a microphone, Dolores.
Yeah, I'm pretty loud. That's true. But I'm trying to have some decorum tonight. So thank you for having me. For those who maybe didn't hear, I am the youth advocate for the town of Dartmouth. And I've been working on some community projects that's open to anyone in the community. Actually, we had our first presentation was last, was it Tuesday? The days are starting to mix up on me. I believe it was Tuesday of last week. It was the anti-bully presentation that was done by the Bristol County Sheriff's Office. We had 13 people to register. All 13 didn't show up, but we had six, which was still wonderful, even if we only had one. If a parent or a guardian or an adult can get information that they can bring back to their community, we're all for it. So was very excited about that. There are some upcoming presentations that I've scheduled in conjunction with other organizations. I did pass out the flyers to the commissioners. Let me back up a little. So this information is also out here in the community. I've worked really hard to try to make sure that it is, I sent it out to DCTV. I've sent it out to the Dartmouth Schools Department, but I've also sent it out to other school departments where our youth attend schools, such as Bishop's Staying, Greater New Bedford Vocational, and also our sister schools and some of the other Catholic schools that are in the area that I know that students attend. I've also sent it out to some of the daycares in the area, too, because they may have some older children that may be homeschooled or go to a different school, just to get the information out to the adults that live in Dartmouth. So some of the other upcoming events that I wanted to schedule, and I wanted to schedule these events before it got too cold because I don't want to be out late at night when it's cold and I know other people don't either. So I'm really trying to be respectful of that. And I also wanted to showcase our brand-new library, which is not really brand-new, but new because it came out during COVID. So I'm really trying to push some foot traffic in that area. So these events are going to be, they are scheduled actually at the North Branch Library, the Dartmouth Library that's on Crossroads. If you haven't been there, please go. That library is absolutely phenomenal. So some of the upcoming events that I have worked hard to schedule with some community partners, the next one actually is this Thursday. It is through South Coastal County Legal Services and the Justice Center of Southeastern Massachusetts. They will be doing a presentation that's entitled Parents and Students' Special Education Rights. I'm hoping to get a lot more people signed up for that because sometimes people don't understand when they have children who may have special needs or may struggle in school, that they may be entitled to special education services. So it talks about the rights of parents and of students. So that presentation is going to be at the North Branch Library on the 22nd. It starts at 6 o'clock. It is free. All of these presentations are free to the public. I just want people to come, show up, get the information and pass it on or hopefully this information is useful for some people. So that's the next upcoming event. So that rounds out the month of September. We also have two presentations in the month of October. The first one is going to be on October the 11th. That is going to be presented by the CAC, which is the Children's Advocacy Center, in conjunction with the Women's Center. And that presentation is going to be on human trafficking and digital responsibility. I think someone was asking me about human trafficking the other day and I said it is a huge issue. I don't think people really understand and what that looks like, especially for our young people. And it ties into the digital responsibility because some of these young people, the way that they get into human trafficking or sex trafficking or child, become child victims is through the internet, meeting people over the internet. And these are how these things snowball. So I'm hoping that we get a lot of participation and parents come out to that one. It's a lot of use for information. So that will be on October the 11th. And also at that particular presentation, too, there are going to be some resource tables set up, so information that can be given out to the community if they have further information or want to know more about where to get help and what are some of the signs to look out for as far as human trafficking and digital responsibility.
And also I might add that the, of course, the co-director at the Child Advocacy Center is one of our former colleagues, Laura Stone.
Oh, okay. Full circle, right?
Exactly right.
So the final presentation that I have will be on October 20, let me make sure, October 25th, that's right. It's on a Tuesday. So that is going to be done by the Bristol County's DA's office. And it's called Hidden in Plain Sight. So I've done this presentation a couple of times. So what this presentation is, this person will set up a mock bedroom. Hopefully, we have participation with people that come to the workshop and to try to figure out or find out ways that young people may hide their drug use or some of the things that they may use. Me personally, I wasn't able to pick out everything. I was really shocked about some of the things and how crafty young people can be. I think sometimes I'm hip and my 17-year-old reminds me every day that I'm not that hip. But, you know, I do, I do my best to try to stay up on things. So I think that's going to be a really powerful presentation. I've had some of the schools call me about that. So I'm hoping that we get some participation from some school personnel. We actually had someone from the school department attend the anti-bully presentation. So there are going to be some resources set up at that one. These last three events won't be televised by DCTV for some obvious reasons. Some of the subject matter may be sensitive to hidden in plain sight. We don't want kids to know that we know what they know. So some things we are not going to televise. But the anti-bully one was televised. It will be aired. DCTV has said it'd be on YouTube. New Bedford asked, I think someone in New Bedford, I think it may have been with Greater New Bedford asked if it could be shared with New Bedford. They're all for it. So I just need to collaborate with them to see if they want to have it shared through their cable-access TV. Some of the other things I worked on, so this summer has been a busy summer. I know school is out, but I still, I'm working and I still have things to do. So one of the big things that I really wanted to work on in one of my projects in my less than two years here, December 18th, two years in this position, by the way, coming up. So, so one of my big projects I wanted to work on is that on our website, that's on the Town of Dartmouth under the Youth Commission and the Youth Advocate, there's resources listed as far as where to go if you're looking for like mental health services, addiction treatment, hospitalizations, et cetera. Well, that hasn't been updated in a very long time. I think I actually saw Kevin Lee's name on some stuff, so that's been a long time. So I've been tediously working on that to try to update that resource list. It's very fluid. So some of these resources might be here today, gone tomorrow. So I finally have gone through the list, looked up things that are relevant, that aren't relevant, added things. So now my job is to try to migrate that into our website. So it's not a very user-friendly platform to use. So it's been taking me a while to actually enter the data into that website and trying to figure out how to enter it so that it's presentable. So if someone besides myself looks at it, they know how to navigate it. So that's a working process. So that's a work in process, but I do have that information and I'm very proud of that, um, that I've got that together. Um, I've also worked over the summer with, um, Saint Peter's Episcopal Church to do a back-to-school drive, which I think was pretty successful. I'm very proud of the, um, the items that we received um, through the church and through the town, because I had donation boxes here also, and people were able to donate. So we were able, so I was able, because I had to go through the stuff, able to give out three boxes each of school items that were donated to the schools. So the decision was made to give it out to the schools and let the principals be responsible for disseminating, um, these items to classrooms, teachers, students, whatever. So I've already delivered three boxes to DeMello, three boxes to Potter, and I received some final products this week. Actually picked up some book bags today. So I have an additional box each to go out to those schools. So whatever they want to do with it, however they see fit to utilize it, I'm all for it. So the next project that I'm working on is Thanksgiving is around the corner and Christmas. So Christmas is a very busy holiday, so working with different community partners to make sure that our families in need in Dartmouth, um, have food and children have toys or whatnot for Christmas. So we are working, we just started today, kind of getting fillers out to see if we can get volunteers, if people want to help out to volunteer to help out with the, um, the Thanksgiving drive. I know last year, Saint Peter's Episcopal Church were able to give out baskets to the four elementary schools. Um, Unitedary reached out to me and I was able to give out baskets, additional baskets to Potter and the high school. So we're trying to get a jump start on it this year. Um, I suggested that, um, once we get the adult volunteers, that we reach out to the high schools to see if we were able to solicit some high school students, especially the ones that are in Honor Society who need their hours, to maybe to come out and help, um, with that. So that is a work in progress. Um, we just started on that today, so more to come. Um, but yeah. I think I do other stuff too, but those were the big projects. I'm very proud of those projects, super proud of those projects. And hopefully, um, this is something that I'm able to do every year. Definitely don't want to do it in the winter, because it's hard for people to get out in the wintertime, I understand. So I try to get it like right when school starts and like before the holiday season kicked in. So maybe next year I can collaborate with different community partners to get other needed, um, workshops or presentations that the community feel will be beneficial. I think that's it.
Comments or questions, anyone?
Great job.
I'm trying, thank you.
Absolutely, great job.
The only I would say, um, you're probably doing it, I just mentioned Mr. McGinnis, that, uh, we have some talented people here in Town Hall regarding the website and how to do it and put it together. And maybe you can knock on their door a little more than you are and help you get that, get that done.
Oh, definitely, because I, because when I went to, because I can go into it, and I'm pretty good at navigating things, but I'm not really sure how they got that piece in that particular area. So.
They'll help you.
There's some experts in town. Call them. Okay.
Be more than happy.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And I did attend the, um, bullying presentation last week, and the presenter Christine Lehman from the Bristol County Sheriff's Office was fabulous.
Yes.
And, um, having worked in the field, I thought I knew a lot, but she had more information and scary what the kids are
Exactly.
exposed to.
And the definitions to it between like bullying and hara- I didn't know some of that stuff. And then some of the terms that she was using, and I told her, I'm like, I'm so glad that you mentioned this, because I had no idea what that meant. So if I didn't know, I'm not saying I'm the expert, but a lot of parents, they don't know, and they don't know like what are the signs to look out if your child is being bullied at school, and what can you do, what power you have as a parent or a guardian, um, to kind of help your child. Um, definitely working with the schools if you notice something. The one big thing that she did say in this presentation, um, write down things. And she suggested that the young person do the same thing. If a bullying incident happens at school, whether it's on the playground, the bus stop, write down where it was, who was there, and what time, to kind of have this documented information so that you can bring it back. And also for parents too, if you're talking to your, um, young kid, and she's talked about some of the ways to kind of talk to your kids about this that won't seem, um, threatening to them. She mentioned like if you're in the supermarket, like if you're at Shox, and you're in the supermarket with your young, um, daughter or son, to just say, hey, like, what's been going on at school today? How I get my son, if I ask him how school was today, he's like, it was okay. That's it. So I have to ask him, I'm like, did anything interesting happen today or anything, you know, different than before that happened today that you want to share, to try to elicit some different responses? But to make sure that you document everything that's being said, because they need that information if they're going to move forward, um, with something, and some of it can actually end up being criminal charges.
I ha- I encourage everyone in our viewing audience to look it up on the DCTV website or their YouTube link to see when it's playing, uh, or when they can view it, because I think that's something they can view, uh, because it was a lot of information.
Yes. And one of the funny things before I go too, we talk about YouTube, because it's like, oh, it's going to be aired on YouTube. And what, um, Christine said to us is that the biggest platform for some of the cyberbullying things that happen is YouTube, which YouTube is my friend. But, um, but she said that's one of the biggest platforms that young people use. And I would thought of in Snapchat or TikTok or Discord or whatever, some of these other things that they use. But she said YouTube is the number one. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
It's always a pleasure to listen to you, Dolores.
I know, it is.
Thank you very much.
Toodleoo.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is Part D, which is the Harbor Master Shellfish Harvesting Days Discussion.
Yes, I can give some background. So we received a request from a, a commercial fisherman who's also a resident in town looking to expand the days of available commercial fishing for, uh, for shellfish fishing for commercial fishermen. Um, I asked Steve Mello, our harbor master, to weigh in and opinion and what his thoughts are so the board can make a decision on whether or not to expand the number of days. So.
Good evening. Going from abber to harbor, and that's the tradition that I can offer.
Very nice.
Might move further too.
Four years ago, we had this exact same letter presented and request was the same. So it was voted, or it was decided four years ago not to change the days, uh, for various reasons. I've tried to memorialize what happened then and why the change was made in the 2018 regulatory change. And what it boils down to is we have two groups of shellfishmen, commercial and recreational. Currently, under the new regulations since 2018, actually 2016, um, they all fish on the same days. So if there's a person out there with a rake and a bucket, it's got to be one of the open days. And that does make life easier, not for me, but it makes it easier for the people to understand what days they're allowed to. And one of the bigger arguments against changing the days back differently for shellfishmen, commercial and recreational, is that if the commercial guys are allowed a Monday and Tuesday, but the recreational are not, and they see the person out there who may have a commercial license, you can't tell, because it's not visible from distance, they can think that as a recreational, they're going to be able to do the same. And the limitation, which is not required by law, limitation on the days of harvest or for conservation purposes. We're solely trying to bring back the industry without dumping a lot of money into the, uh, field. So we've done everything we can with grants, with outgrowing, with small seed purchases strategically placed, and then conservation. And the day of the week restriction that we currently have prohibits shellfishing on Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday by everyone, gives, uh, a fighting chance to the shellfish. It recognizes that there are going to be some Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays that the tide just isn't right. So it restricts the amount or the quantity, preserving some for future generations. So I'm here, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. That is my understanding of why, uh, former town administrator Kressman instituted the changes that he did and why they have survived since 2016.
So your, your recommendation is to leave it alone?
It works, yes. It works fine for many reasons. I, I don't think that adding days for one class and not another is going to help. It's going to probably make things.
So Mr. Maderas said he discussed this with a shellfish warden, and I said it was all right with him to make the changes.
Four, uh, four years ago, when he wrote that letter, um, it wasn't clear why. And I encouraged him then to bring it to the board, and that's when I did the research. So I think he's taken a little bit of liberty in saying that, at this point, I have no problem with it, because we haven't discussed it. And I told him that it was a matter for the select board to decide, and I would go along with the wishes of the board.
So in the, on the weeks that the tide doesn't work, he claims he loses, uh, basically that week. Is that realistic?
It may be a day of the week, but it's, uh, we have two high tides and two low tides every day. It's depending on whether.
He said he loses most of the week.
Yeah, well.
That's to be determined. So if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Don't change it, right?
I was, I was impressed with how many permits are given out. We have over a hundred and eighty permits.
Yeah.
The majority of which are free and senior, but that's.
Recreational permits. And, um, I, I will say I do see people out there, but six or eight tops for all the permits that are given.
In the 1960s, the north side of the bridge especially was, people, you could walk from boat to boat. There were that many people making a living at it. Times have changed. The market has changed. Uh, we have two commercial, uh, licenses that are out. So the majority of what we're working for in the town is the historic recreational family traditional, um, harvesting.
Right.
Okay, so, um, we do not need to vote on this.
Unless you want to make a change, you don't need to vote. Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Good job, Steve.
In Mr. Maderas's letter, he said the two days that were removed are Monday and Tuesday, but actually it's Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday that they cannot.
That is correct. Sunday was never on the table, but, and I explained this to him, Saturday was never allowed for commercial in the old regulations. So he has gained Saturday, the commercial.
Yeah.
Have gained a Saturday, but lost Monday and Tuesday. So it, again, it's not two days lost, it's one.
We need to, uh, get a letter to Mr. Maderas and his response. Is that from you or from us, or who do you recommend?
I can certainly tell him. I see him almost every day. Um, but.
Tell him the board voted not to change it. Well.
Well, based on your recommendation, the board voted not to rule as it is.
Tell him that the board didn't change it. To keep it as it is.
Yeah, there's no vote, so there's no change.
We'll inform him.
No vote.
No change.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. All set with that one. Thank you. Uh, Letter E is a notice of intent for 1157 Russell Mills Road, and that has been postponed.
Uh, continued. Uh, no representative here.
Continued, okay. Uh, is the town clerk here? There she is, okay.
I'm not excited. I tried to jump in line, sorry.
We have our members of the Finance Committee here being patient. We appreciate it. Thank you.
They're always patient.
I'm going to be quick. So I'm before you tonight to talk about a change in Precinct Three. We're looking to move Precinct Three from the Dartmouth Bible Church over to UMass Dartmouth. I've been working, um, since probably May with some representatives at UMass Dartmouth to have a polling precinct over on the campus. The vast majority of registered voters in Precinct Three are, um, students over at the university, so it makes sense. It also would be in conjunction with the town's goals to better incorporate, um, the university into our different town events. They will all be notified. Every registered voter in Precinct Three will receive a postcard. Everybody that voted in Precinct Three on September 6th received a card to let them know, and we will have it advertised in a number of places.
We used to do this before.
So that's starting in November?
It will. Yep, November 8th. Um, they'll be over at UMass Dartmouth. The information will be clear. They're going to park in Lot Five. They have a really nice space in their Marketplace North Hall um, for the voting. It will help lots of the students who don't have transportation um, to more easily be able to vote. They're working at getting more, um, students registered to vote. So, um, that's an area that's very underrepresented as far as voting, um, and participation. So we're hoping to help remedy some of that.
That was a precinct years ago.
So that's, that's. I think it's been a significant amount of time. I do think that there was, um, some efforts with my predecessor to get it back. I'm not sure why it didn't work, but, um, they certainly.
The results were very sad, unfortunately.
When it was there, there was not good turnout.
Horrible. Well, this is a non-town vote, voting, so maybe. Mr. McDonald, something to say?
Yeah, where, where is the polling location going to be?
On the campus?
Yeah.
It's going to be in Marketplace North Hall on the second floor. So if you park in Five, you'll walk up the walkway and it will be there. If you enter that door, there's an elevator to your left. When you come off the elevator, literally you will be in the polling place.
Okay, I, I, part of the, part of the reason why that it was pulled from UMass Dartmouth was, um, some of the, some of our residents were getting lost, uh, going to vote. And they just walked out not to vote because of the, of where it was. Plus the fact that most of the time the voting was happening during school, you know, the parking, um, they were further away. Um, from, from most polling places, they had probably twice as long or maybe three times as long to walk to the polling place. Plus, if I remember correctly, I have to, I have to jog my memory. I think somebody who went to go vote didn't have a sticker and their car got towed.
So I don't believe you need a sticker, because I've been to the campus now a number of times, um, and parked there and not had an issue. I don't believe parking is going to be an issue for them. They are really on board with having it there. I will tell you that as far as participation, in September, sixty-eight people voted in Precinct Three. So I, I somehow just don't think that this is going to impact.
Well, I, I, I know the majority of Precinct Three is, is the campus, so.
So this would not be an issue for them. Most people that are on campus can walk there. Um, the university has assured me if anybody has an issue with walking, they will have a small, uh, golf cart or gator that can take you from the parking lot to the building. I don't know where the voting was on campus prior, but we have tried to make it incredibly accessible. Um, we're talking about four hundred and fifty registered voters in that entire precinct. Um, and I would say probably ninety percent are already on campus. So I think it's giving people a better opportunity in that precinct to participate.
Can we just, can we just have some polling data, uh, after the election? The number of registered voters from Precinct Three who live on campus and those who are not on campus who are, I would, I don't want to use the term regular town residents, but non-student, um, registered voters. Um, and just to see how, what the polling numbers are for those individuals who have to come onto campus to vote versus who are already living on campus and voting. I, I like to see those numbers to see if it's. I don't want to say worth it, but if it's acceptable to, to have the polling place moved, because right now three and four together, you're in one spot, you know, and you're not that far from the campus.
But sixty-eight voters for a state primary is unacceptable.
Well, you know, state primary, I'll be honest with you, state primary voting is not the most, you know, it's not the most, um.
I, I was.
Voting, it is. State election is, federal election is.
You'll see though that Precinct Three is far below the rest of the town in a state election, in a presidential election, um, to the point where the secretary's office called to ask if we had an error in Precinct Three after the presidential, because it was so much lower than everyone else.
Part of the problem of where the precincts were, we were created because of the secretary of state's office too. So.
I was.
I'm not going to go there.
I, I was on a Zoom, uh, for about a year with, uh, some of the students at school interested in trying to promote more participation. And I think if they're trying to do this and want to try it, we should be, uh, we should be cooperative. And it may not take, uh, it may take more than one election to get the word out and do it, but I think we should, uh, we should have an open mind and give it a try. And this. And this year being a state election as opposed to a town, I think it's a good time to try it.
Our residents aren't coming out for town elections, so-
I'm sorry?
I said, our residents aren't coming out for town elections, so I don't know that that's a reasonable expectation for them. The state has also, they previously were promoting how they're trying to get every student registered to vote, and we allow for them to use that as a residence living on campus.
It also could be a buildup for the presidential election in two years to have them a place to vote, and they'll maybe participate even more. Give them a chance.
See how it plays out.
But also, now that we have early voting, mail-in voting, so the residents who are in Precinct 3 receive the card that now they're going to be voting on campus, they could come into the town hall in advance, do an absentee ballot, or-
Do a mail-in ballot. That 68 voters, that was with early voting, voting at their own precinct, early voting and mail-in. It's, there's a lack of participation in that precinct, and I would argue it's because the vast majority of people are on campus. And again, we keep talking about how we're trying to incorporate the university, so making it easier for people to vote, which is certainly something the state is doing with having all these options. We should be consistent with those goals, which are not just for the town clerk's office, but I think that we're part of, you know, we're participating in programs to help generate more participation. This is being led by an actual student who contacted me and has scheduled all the meetings. He has had support from the university. They're willing to, to staff their precinct. So the town will not be looking for more poll workers, which is an ongoing issue. There's not an added cost to the town to have it there. And again, the vast majority of registered voters in that precinct are on campus, so it should be, you know, reasonable for them to also be able to participate.
Let's give them a chance. Any other comments? I had one quick question. Is there some reason why we didn't get any material prior to the meeting that we could have known? Because we weren't quite sure what your meeting was for, the specifics.
So there really is, I have the postcard that I'm sending to them, but there's no other real documents that go with it.
No, let me rephrase that. But anything to tell us why you were coming? Because otherwise, we didn't get any material that I know of.
I apologize. I don't have any material. I will write you a letter or memo in the future.
Just a little one-page of what you were doing. It would have been helpful because we'd be prepared for you.
No problem.
But otherwise, I think it's a great, great thing to do and try. And let's give these kids a break out there to participate even more. And they're willing to do the work as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can we bring anybody else on besides Finance Committee? Before Finance, I guess we can't.
No.
Again, thanks for coming.
Okay. Well, my name is Bob Govan. And I'm the chairman of the Dartmouth Finance Committee. I am not on the agenda, but we voted Thursday night 0-6-0 to not support the bylaw on the, on the drop-off bins, the donation bins. And I felt that, well, the group felt that it was important that we let you know some of our concerns so that you're not blindsided because the, you know, the timing of the, you know, when the warrant has to go out and things like that. So I made myself available because I understand you're voting on the warrant tonight. I'd just like to say that we, we support the spirit of it, you know. You know, I've gone there and seen a bunch of stuff, you know, lined up, and I just went to another, another place, you know. But it is an issue. But when we really got into it, and what I have here is a list of some of the questions. I have a list of the questions. I don't need answers, but just to make you aware of some of the things that we, we came up with. And it was kind of a spirited discussion. As usually bylaws are. Like I said, we support it, but we voted 0-6-0. You know, the donation, the definition of a bin, you know, are there, you know, it seemed to be too broad. Does this cover the, you know, you see people who put books out in front of their house, and they, people give up books and take books and things like that. That's not, that's not clear. Also, you know, there are certain organizations that donate, you know, people give their old flags to be, you know, disposed of properly. You know, does that cover, you know, cover them? And also, and we don't, again, this was, you know, we looked at it, all of a sudden, you got it, you know, on the warrant. It talks about nonprofits, but are there profit companies that run these things? We don't, we didn't know the answer to that. So, so the definition of a bin, those are the questions that we came up with. The, the other issue that we looked at that we thought was, security cameras, you know, the way it's written up, the group had a lot of problems with that. And the, you know, are we asking a charity to put in a security camera? Are we going to ask the church if they have a donation bin in their parking lot? That they're going to have a security, security camera? So there was a lot of pushback on the requirement for security, security cameras. Other questions we had was, who decides who gets a fine? And is there an appeal process? And it really isn't clear in the writing up of the bylaw. Also, under additional standard restrictions, the types of material that these donation bins are going to be made of, and, you know, what type of goods are going to be placed in the donation bin? So does this mean that the town's going to be regulating what can be put in bins and what bins will be made of? Again, that was another question. So we're, we voted 0-6-0, which is rare for the Finance Committee to, you know, be totally against it. But we just felt that it needed more work, and it needs to maybe more public comment to kind of refine it a little bit going forward.
We had similar responses on the board when we talked about it.
Comments? Anyone want to start? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, three years' worth of work, and it still needs work. Well, I'm interested in that. First of all, I don't quite understand how a donation bin is even remotely, remotely the same as a library, a library thing. I think that, I think that's a very ridiculous analogy, and it's not aimed at that. This is aimed at these donation bins that people put out, that property owners allow on their property, and then they have absolutely zero control over the way they look. And case in point was the ones that were on Farnes Connor Road, Farnes Connor Mall Road at Stop &amp; Shop. Those were crap holes. Every single week, it looked disgusting. Well, evidently, Stop &amp; Shop had enough of it because they're gone. Those are no longer there. This is aimed at, at the property owners and the people who have these bins to make sure that they keep them at least presentable at most times. I know it's difficult sometimes because you're dealing with the public, okay? And nowhere in this bylaw does it say what we're going to allow and not allow. What we're saying is, is that we want nonprofits. Because most of this stuff, when you see something from Planet Earth, it's profit. When you see something from Savers, it's profit. When you see something that, that was the biggest, the biggest concerns were, is these, people were putting these in the bins thinking that they were making donations to charity when in fact, they were going back to the company, and they were reselling them, making a profit. And that's where the biggest problem is. The Salvation Army bins go for, go for aid. Goodwill, not Goodwill, Goodwill's the worst. Red Cross is, is, is another one that uses the clothing, and it goes to, in materials. So I, you know, I don't, I saw the discussion, and when somebody's, when somebody brought up that it, you know, well, you could be confused with, this is aimed at the little libraries. No, it's not. This is aimed at those big giant bins. And as far as the security cameras go, okay, you know, maybe, maybe we don't need to do that, but you know something? We can always make a change in the bylaw once it's approved. It doesn't have to be that way. But we need to get something on the books or else, you know, these bins are just going to be a disgusting eyesore throughout the entire town. You got, this has been being worked on for three years. And it was, you know, I'm wondering why it was taking so long. Well, you know, we got COVID, and we got caught up with other things. But now we're at a point where we're able to at least get something on the books. Get something on the books, and then we can work with the little machinations, you know. And as far as, you know, we can have, one of the other discussions has to do with the bins that are on the school property, okay? We can allow for an allowance for that, you know, by creating a slight change in, but we've got to get something on the books. And I'll be honest with you. Some of the discussion that you have was just not necessary, was superfluous, and not to the point. And I'm a little bit disappointed in that. You guys do great work, but, I mean, the majority of discussion should never have been made because it wasn't relevant to the, to the, to the bylaw.
Okay, well, I'm not here to debate you. But all I can tell you is that if you've been working on this for three years, we had this presented to us a little bit over a week ago. And once we started reading it, and, and I understand what you're saying, it's not meant for the small libraries, but it doesn't say specifically that excludes it. We have an attorney who's a member of our board, and when he read that, he said, he says, it doesn't say that.
With all disrespect, you can get two different attorneys looking at the same thing, and then both of them are going to come up with different conclusions.
I understand, I understand.
Okay. Mrs. Brooks, you have something to say?
Well, I just wanted to say that last week when we talked about the warrant, and that was the first time that I saw it, it was on our agenda. You know, I brought up the concern about the for-profit bins that the school department has. I've since spoken to Mr. Kylie, who said that they receive roughly $1,000 a month from Bay State Textiles. So it's $12,000 over the course of the year, and they actually got more money during the pandemic. It's not something that he would like to, you know, stub his nose at, and he'd like to be a part of the conversation on, on input into this.
I think that three years ago was a long time when it started in the process. And I, we, as a group, we didn't have that discussion either because this goes back in history. And it ended up to be that I think a lot of us were surprised because it was maybe because it was so old, and maybe we forgot about it. And the process is a little surprising because we did have our first discussion here last time. I think there's, you know, I, I did a tour around town Sunday just to get acclimated to it, and I don't think I missed that many. And I know that the worst violators were up on Route 6 and the retailers there. And I went looking for us at Stop &amp; Shop, and they were gone. And Sean makes the point, they were gone because they were probably going to start a fire soon, and they realized maybe Stop &amp; Shop, their responsibility to get rid of it. I have a couple of concerns. Number one is that the for-profit bins are the ones that are going to be able to afford doing or asking for. Be it, we're asking in that law to lock them at night and unlock them in the morning. It's in, it's a detail, and I think that's not realistic. Who's going to do it and when, and who's going to enforce it? They're not going to be locked and unlocked. There's also, the bins at, I guess I might as well say it straight, the bins at the mall, it says on the sign, Standard Recycling Corporation owns the bin and makes a single annual payment to support connection, the nonprofit. Then down the bottom, it says, all proceeds go to Standard Recycling Corp. Donated items will be used for profit. And I don't know what lawyer put that together, but I'm, they covered every base on that sticker to say that they're profit and they're nonprofit. And there were four bins put together, and what they'd taken there, the sign was very vague. But it was clean, but maybe it was just picked up. But trying to decipher what's profit, nonprofit is also another issue. I think that we're all saying the same thing. Ms. McDonald, who probably is exposed to those more up there on Route 6 than any of us, is disgusted the way they're operated, and he's right. And it needs work. But I, this seems pretty draconian. Here's another spot why, the parking space. They can't be placed on a parking space. And if you have enough parking spaces, I've experienced this in a lot, and you take up a couple of spaces in the back, and you still haven't violated the planning board's rule that you need 400 parking spaces, and this is number 500, then you haven't violated that. See, why not put it in the corner someplace out of the way? And we've restricted them to do that. It can't go on a parking space.
Right.
As far as I know, every parking lot is pretty much lined with spaces. So this law says there's no place to put it because there's parking spaces. And I understand why they did it, because you want to have rules. This thing's pretty draconian is what I see it. And I think we need to have an absolute rule for this that we can enforce. And here we are with a profit. Thanks to Mrs. Brooks doing the research, it's $12,000 a year for the school department, and may disappear. And they do, Cushman School yesterday had nicely done like this, and there's a pile of crap on the left side.
Mr. Kylie informed me that he still feels that when he, when they see it, and the principal may call and say, we have a problem.
It never gets too bad.
He sends out maintenance.
It never gets too bad.
They throw it out, and he said, it's a, you know, a bit of time, but he still looks at the profit.
No, and the issue is that if you put it in the back of the parking lot without visibility,
you'll never get any stuff in there. So it has to be visible.
Or you'll get more crap.
Yeah. And, and, but that, those particular bins, yes, they are there, but they're never inundated because no one goes near them for a month.
I do applaud Mr. McDonald for saying that we needed this.
Yep.
The fact that the ones at Stop &amp; Shop are gone, and I will tell you, the ones at St. Mary's Church have been redone. They used to have a, probably about five odd ones, some rustier than the others. Now they have like three brand-new ones, you know, so-
And they're very explicit what they want to take.
Yes, so I do think we don't want the eyesores. But I, I also applaud the groups that are doing this, that are keeping stuff out of the, out of the town yard from being thrown out.
Well, as you know, you know, we write a letter to town meeting, and I wanted to let you know before we do it, because Thursday, we're actually going to be writing a letter. I just brought some questions that came up. There were, there were more, but we didn't want to blindside you. We wanted to make sure that-
Appreciate that. You know, I also am very strongly in favor of keeping the profit bins as long as they're, they're very definitive and explicit as to what they do and why they do it. And if they don't want to do that, then they can't come into town. And I think many of them will pull the plug because they don't want you to know it's for profit. They disguise it. This one at the mall, I've never seen like it, it was-
Well, maybe they had issues in other towns and cities.
They're from New York.
Yeah, so-
No, they, this is professionally done. They knew exactly what they're saying. And it was disguised.
And it would be interesting to know if the mall had approved that they put it on, or did they just, you know?
Well, yeah, this particular mall in Dartmouth, they've, they've-
It's an outside owner, yeah.
They manage 15 malls.
Yeah, and they probably have the same bins in all of them, yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
And I think we need to take control of that. If that's what we want to do, we can do it, but-
Okay, we voted in favor of every other item that's on the-
That was the other question.
Might as well know now.
We spent a lot of time on the bins, but did we spend enough on the capital Spanish for them? Anything else?
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, and I appreciate the comments on the other articles because I was going to ask you the same question. Okay.
So tonight, the board needs to vote on the warrant and sign for the warrant. So generally, Mr. McDonald's been the fastest reader, so he goes through it.
Would you like to do it, Mr. McDonald?
I'm done.
Somebody else can do it.
Go ahead, David.
Okay.
I'm happy to read. How much of it do you want to be read?
I would just, just read the article and, you know. No, no, just read the article.
Read the article on the.
All right. Okay, Article One, Community Preservation Committee Dias Landing Marina Expansion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to recommend, sorry.
Oh, that's right. Moved to adopt, recommend.
We didn't read the article, all we did is read the title.
Do you want me to read the whole thing to see if the town will vote to appropriate $200,000 from the Dartmouth Community Preservation Act unrestricted resources to the Town of Dartmouth Waterways Department slash Harbor Master for the Arthur F. Dias Landing Marina Expansion Project, all in accordance with the terms and conditions of the Community Preservation Memorandum or understanding and referenced in the Community Preservation Fiscal Year 2023 budget. That is included with the warrant as a separate handout.
Moved to rec, we did that, moved to recommend?
Yep.
Second.
Second?
Yeah, second.
Okay. Comments or questions? We need, we don't need, we need, we don't need a roll call vote.
No.
Just all in favor or?
Any comments or questions?
I don't know if you can see this.
All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, I hear none. Article one is approved.
Okay. Article two?
Recommended. Thank you.
Community Preservation Committee Russell's Mills Land Conservation Phase Two, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $202,500 from the Dartmouth Community Preservation Act unrestricted reserves to the Dartmouth Natural Resource Trust for the Russell's Mills Land Conservation Project Phase Two, being the acquisition of the conservation purposes of the land to consist of Lot 42 of Dartmouth Assessors Map 28, containing 15.6 acres plus or minus, and those portions of Lot 21 dash, 42 dash one of Assessors Map 28, containing 8.9 plus or minus acres in total, that are shown as Parcels A and Parcels B on the unrecorded draft plan that was prepared by SciTech and is entitled Draft Conservation Restriction Plan in Dartmouth, Massachusetts, prepared for Harry J. and Mary Ann Booth and last dated July 22nd, 2022, and a copy of which plan is included with the warrant as a separate handout, all in accordance with the terms and conditions of the Community Preservation Project Grant Agreement and referenced in the Community Preservation Fiscal Year 2023 budget that is included with the warrant as a separate handout or take any action relative thereto.
Okay.
Moved to recommend.
Second.
Second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none.
Before we proceed, Mr. McGinnis, is there any changes from the last time we reviewed this other than language?
I don't believe so, no.
I, I, I have a.
Motion that we make, that we waive the reading of the article and just name the article by name and by article number.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All right, Article Three. Oh, sorry.
We have none voted. Any discussion on that or comments?
You okay with that, Frank?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. We'll read the, uh, article number and the, um, heading on the article.
Okay. Article Three, Community Preservation Committee Regional Park Playground.
Moved to recommend.
Second.
Any comments or discussions on that? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, I hear none. Article Three, recommended.
Article Four, Community Preservation Committee Dartmouth Heritage Trail.
Moved to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? All in favor of Article Four, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I hear none. Article Four is recommended.
Article Five, Appropriation to the Stabilization Fund.
Moved to recommend.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Uh, all those in favor of Article Five, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I hear none. Article Five is recommended.
Article Six, Acceptance of the Capital Planning Committee Report and Funding of FY 2023 Capital Plan.
Moved to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion or comments on any individual appropriation? Let's take a moment, please. Any comments?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, I hear none. Article?
Six.
Six is recommended unanimously.
Article Seven, Appropriation to the Stabilization Fund for Collective Bargaining and Non-Union Agreements.
Moved to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, I hear none. Article Seven is recommended unanimously.
Article Eight, Appropriation for Collective Bargaining Agreements.
Moved to recommend.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I hear none. Article Eight is recommended unanimously.
Article Nine, Creation of Stabilization Fund for Opioid Legal Settlement Receipts.
Moved to recommend.
Second.
Any comments, discussion? All in favor of Article Nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, I hear none. Article Nine is unanimously recommended.
Article Ten, Appropriation to the Stabilization Fund for Opioid Legal Settlement Receipts.
Moved to recommend.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor of Article Ten, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I hear none. Article Ten is recommended unanimously.
Article Eleven, Supplement to the FY 2023 Operating Budget of the Dartmouth Community Television DCTV Enterprise Fund.
Moved to recommend.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor of Article Ten, please say aye.
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 Opposed, I hear none. Article Eleven passes unanimously.
Article Twelve, Dartmouth Wetland Protection Bylaw Amendment.
Moved to recommend.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor of Article Twelve, please say aye.
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 Opposed, I hear none. Article Twelve passes unanimously. Article Thirteen.
Article Thirteen, Bylaw Required License for Donation Bins.
Moved to recommend.
Second.
Any comments or questions? I'm going to make a comment.
Yeah.
I'm very much in favor of, um, of the, the concept of this entire article. I'm not in favor of some of the details that I think go either too far or they're unclear. And I'm going to vote no because, um, I think it needs to be revised and it should be revised, in my view, for, uh, next town meeting.
Any other comments?
I'm going to vote no or ask for this to be pulled because I think it needs work.
Mr. Gracie, any comments out there?
No, I agree that it should be pulled back.
But we have a motion on the floor. Support.
You can vote first on the motion.
Vote first and then vote from her.
Right, okay. Okay, are we ready to vote before any other comments?
Yes.
All those in favor of Article Thirteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say no.
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 Article Thirteen passes, uh, excuse me, um, four to one against.
Well, so if we don't have this dog and pony show, if you guys want to pull it, pull it now. We can pull it before town meeting.
I'm, I'm waiting for a comment. Anybody in favor of, do we need to vote on pulling it?
Yes.
Okay. I, uh, oh, I'm waiting for a motion if there is one.
I'll make a motion to pull Article Thirteen from the warrant to work on it with counsel and reinstate this in the June, um, town meeting.
I'll second that.
Second? Any discussion or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Nay.
Okay, the article, uh, the, uh, motion passes four to one. The poll.
I don't know what Hammer feels like.
So I would now vote to sign the warrant as amended. You've amended the warrant, so just maybe take a vote to, for the board to sign the warrant as amended. You both voted on it, you need to vote.
Okay. Okay, we need a motion?
Motion to, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Sign the warrant as amended.
Okay. Motion to sign the warrant as amended.
A second on that?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion or comments before we vote? All those in favor of signing the, um, the article, the warrant as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay.
Is that a unanimous vote?
Yeah, you don't hear a nay, do you?
I did not. Well, I didn't know there was an extension. I'm sorry. Okay, that out of, that passes, um, that amendment, uh.
Five to zero.
Five to zero. Okay, we made it.
I may be obstinate, but I don't stand in the way of progress.
I understand. I know exactly what you did. Appreciate it.
But we're not going to, we're not going to let it go. We're going to work on it.
Well, it has merits.
Throw the baby out with the bathwater, that's for sure.
What's that?
Not going to throw the baby out with the bathwater.
No.
I, I think that there is absolute unanimity here that we will come up with a amended plan for next town meeting from everybody here.
And it puts no, it puts folks on notice that if they have a donation bin that.
Absolutely.
Is in violation to what we've been talking about.
Yep.
Now's the time to do something about it.
And I, as far as I'm concerned, I, I think it's, uh, we did quite well to have this discussion and to have it out there and we're going to clean it up, whatever that means. Okay. Next, we up to old business?
I think town administrators update.
This time, shorter than the previous, we just met last week, so, but there is some things, uh.
Mr. McGinnis, a chance, excuse me.
You're aware of most of, uh, just a reminder, October 3rd, uh, the Select Board meeting, there'll be a, uh, hearing for the cable contract ascertainment. Comcast will be here to, uh, gather feedback from residents in the board and, uh, all members of the community on their services and what they like and dislike about it. Peter Chase, our director of media, has been organizing that. The fall town meeting warrant has been finalized. Thanks to Gary Carrero, Cody Hadad and Melanie in our office for helping to pull us together, along with all the other staff that, that go into this. Human resources wise, our new, uh, human resources director Denise Boseng has been busy, busy working on hiring. We've hired, um, one, two, three, four, looks like 11 new positions. Counsel on Aging Engagement Coordinator, new Conservation Officer, uh, four, uh, heavy, heavy equipment truck drivers at DPW, which are sorely needed. New dispatcher and a library services librarian, so she's been very busy working diligently to onboard these people as soon as possible. She's done a great job. Next, we have, uh, a notification Friday night at the football game at Memorial Stadium. The school will be presenting a plaque honoring the history of the Dartmouth Indian Logo and our Native American neighbors, so if people want to turn out to witness that. Uh, we received, uh, I mentioned the McGrattany lease, uh, we received one applicant. We're currently in the process of reviewing that. We hope to present something to the board probably later in October. And also just a reminder, we mentioned this before, but EverSource will be out doing a small business, no energy, uh, cost assessments, no cost energy assessments. They're out there this week, starting the 19th through Friday, uh, September 30th, visiting businesses and offering the service. So, uh, we highly recommend businesses take advantage of that. And that's it for my updates.
We also have the road reconstruction on, uh, Wilkem Road tonight.
As we speak, yes.
Tonight.
It's been posted on our website and social media, yes.
I know it's on the website, it's everywhere, so that's, that's fine.
Thank God that you all see it.
But I'm glad they do it at night. They've done that before and it works out nicely.
Uh, old business, uh, no new updates on, uh, any of the items.
Okay. Uh, we have minutes to approve. We do them both together, August 8th and 22nd.
I saw no issues.
Any comments or issues?
I didn't have a problem, but.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is this is both minutes of, uh, August 8th and 22nd?
Yes.
A second?
Second.
Second. Any comments or questions? All in favor of approving, uh, minutes from August 8th and 22nd, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I hear none. Those minutes are approved. Next would be Select Board Updates. Anybody have anything to say?
I, I do.
Okay, that's, uh, okay, then go right ahead.
So, um, I would like to bring up before us, um, a motion to revoke a permit for October 20th for Battleship Harley Davidson. Uh, the, uh, things have got out of hand, the last two or three, um, I guess get-togethers, they might call it. And, um, we need to send a letter to, to the owners of Battleship Harley, Harley Davidson and, um, have them come before us. And if they want any more outside activities, uh, they, they have to come here first.
I think it would be more appropriate to bring them in on October 3rd to discuss the, the possible revocation of the October 20th license.
It's not in the minutes, so I don't think we have a big.
But I also, just to kind of compound on that, um, I also want the owners of the, the vacant lot across the street from, um, Battleship Harley Davidson, the owner of the, um, garage that's fenced in, um, right after, um, in between how, uh, Battleship and, um, um.
This street address?
Where Joe's, where Joe's Used Cycle is, was.
This address is on there, Sean?
Huh?
Street address is on those, these locations?
Uh, I'm, to be honest with you, I'm not sure because I, my understanding, I, my understanding is that Battleship has tried to get ahold of that particular owner so that they could use the lot, rent the lot during these events. But there were still cars parked on, um, their pri, their property, um, definitely without their knowledge. There was also cars parked in the entrance to the, um, the tennis court facility and also down near, um, um.
All, all the way down.
Where the Brevarnecks are going to be put in the, uh, the, and of course parked across the lot. There was also a car parked, um, in the used car lot and I'm sure there was probably something in, around, um, Dunkin' Donuts and whatnot.
I take it, uh, that because this is not on the agenda, that we can't go deep on this, but I think what we're saying, if I may.
We can, we can talk about why.
What I'm saying is that we want to have an October 3rd meeting with the owner, with the manager and all the surrounding property owners, uh, if they want to be there to, as well, to, 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 um, yeah, to get all the issues, uh, on the table on October 3rd. And nothing will happen until we have, that we have that meeting.
But I would also like the safety officer here and I would also want the, um, uh.
The chief.
Traffic, the traffic officer.
Traffic officer.
Okay.
The chief should be here. The chief should be here.
And the chief, or.
Or representative.
Or designated, yeah.
And this will be for the October 3?
Yes.
And they will find out they don't show up, we.
They won't have a, they won't have the permit.
That do it, Sean?
Because my understanding is, the band that's coming in for the October 20th is probably one of the more popular bands, so.
We'll see.
Great for them, really?
Well, that behooves them to, October 3.
Okay.
Yeah, it's called Methuselah.
Okay, Mr. Mickelson, are you finished?
I'm done.
Mr. McDonald, any comments on this?
I did have something that I just, because of this discussion, it just blew away.
And give you a minute, okay.
Wait a minute.
Go ahead.
No, no, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Brooks, in the meantime?
No, thanks.
Great, no, I'm on.
I'll talk and keep thinking, Sean.
We still have a couple of things.
Doesn't give me a signal.
I, I would like to say that as, that we are going to be working on, have discussions with Mr. McGinnis and I, a workshop program starting in October and November to bring in different committees and boards to have discussions about long-range capital planning, long-range master plan, ZBA and their strategy, waterways, et cetera. The idea is, we don't want their job, we don't want to make decisions, but there are issues that we think that we need to prioritize and get people in the room who can talk about it and maybe come up with some adjustments, change of plans, or a change of focus. And these meetings will take place, we're looking at, the best way to do it is prior to, either we'll start our meetings earlier, but having the nights of our meetings on Monday to make it easier, and then we'll get started, but it will be a focus on these, on these workshops specifically with an agenda and prepared, so that we can get some work done and some teeth into this, because we have some great people out there doing great work, but sometimes we need to talk about the overall direction, the long-range activities of some of these groups, and we want to be able to talk to them, and.
Yes, and I, in looking at that, I created a template, which I'll share with the board, which gave some potential topics, and then just a listing of departments and boards and committees right from our website, the town website, which I think if we, if we talk further, we'll see that some boards or committees may have disbanded, although they were still listed, or some can be joined, and, you know, one group can fulfill discussion on committees as well as.
For example, what we're trying to do here happened tonight, you know, maybe it happened by happenstance or not, but here we have some people passionate about trees, we have Eversource here, and the town needs to revitalize that program, we got people to do it, and because we had discussions and talks, we end up with something very positive, and that's what we're looking for. And I look forward to those discussions with these different groups as we go forward. Mr. McDonald, did it prickly?
It came back.
Yes, it did. I don't know why it's even escaped, because it had to do with Route 6.
Oh, you're favorite.
For the first time since it started, I saw the crosswalk lights in use on Connecticut Avenue. Problem is this.
Uh-oh.
The gentleman using the lights to cross didn't cross when the lights were flashing, he crossed when it was finished, which, if I didn't stop, I would have hit him. The thing is, is that when you look at all other crosswalks, there is a counter, a sequence to, you know, basically, instead of the red hand stop, it's a white hand with a countdown timer as to you can cross. There's nothing there to tell the individual that the lights are on, other than the flashing lights going east, going west, but when you're standing in between the lights, you don't see them. You don't see the flashing lights. So there's no indicators to the person crossing that they can now cross. Granted, probably within the first six months, you're going to be taking your own life in your hand if you do use the crosswalk legitimately, because people just, they need to, they need to see it work, they need to see it done and get used to it. For the majority of the people who travel up and down that road, once they see the crosswalks on, they will stop, guaranteed. However.
Isn't there a little guy that shows walking and not walking?
No, no, there's nothing.
He's talking about a timer.
All it is, all it is, to be honest with you, is a square yellow light that flashes on the poles that faces east and faces west, but when you're standing at the crosswalk, you're in between the poles.
Is that?
You don't see the flashing lights.
Is that a mass DOT issue?
Yes, it is.
Could we write to them and get an explanation?
They need, they need to kind of relook at, you know, those lights are probably good at UMass Dartmouth, where there's very little traffic, but going across two lanes of highway east and west, that's not good at all. It's, it's an accident, and, and the gentleman, the gentleman, I can tell you, he was confused as to, do I move, do I don't move? He just stayed there, and then the light stopped, and then he went across, because I stopped to let him cross. But as he was crossing, cars coming up going eastbound were just flying through.
I mean, folks, it's the explanation for a mass DOT.
Right, they need to, they need to look at that, and a better signaling system, because it's just a.
When they redo Hathaway Road, they put a, put a better one on there.
I just, you know.
Okay, no, we didn't, that's not part of my.
Is that happening soon?
Yes, it is. Okay. Any other update? Frank, I'll say, any other updates from anybody?
Oh, I'll say.
Information? I guess that's kind of information?
Yeah, we did it all.
Okay. Have we had enough?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any comments or questions on the motion to adjourn?
Never.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. This meeting is now adjourned.